How did you know that that was on my mind? No, not the money, the property, because I ended up calling after it.
We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome H. Ween Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach. Councilmember Ruckregel.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to ask everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have several proclamations and a couple of other recognitions this evening, but we're going to start first with arts in Education Day, and we're very honored to have Ms. Illinois, Ariel Beverley is with us, and we'll meet at the center podium. Whereas arts education comprised of a rich array of disciplines, including dance, music, theater, media arts, literature, design, and visual arts, is a core academic subject and an essential element of a complete and balanced education for all Illinois students. And whereas arts education enables students to develop critical thinking skills, imagination, discipline, and ways to express their feelings, all of which support academic success across the curriculum as well as personal growth outside the classroom. And whereas to succeed in today's economy, students must masterfully use words, images, sounds, and movement to communicate. And whereas arts education has the power to make students want to learn, not just within the arts, but other areas of study. Attracting and retaining the best teachers is vital and can be achieved by ensuring that schools embrace the arts, becoming havens for creativity and innovation. And whereas the nonprofit art sector is an economic engine and plays a significant role in the economic health of the communities, large and small, with direct expenditures of wages and benefits as well as goods and services. And whereas art is integral to the lives of United States citizens and essential to the health and vitality of our communities and the nation. Now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria do hereby declare September the 15th as Arts in Education Day in Peoria, Illinois. So we were fortunate last week, we had Ms. Illinois was coming through Peoria, and we had a chance to talk for a few minutes. I got to have a good understanding of her appreciation for arts and education. I was able to show her the displays that we have on the third and fourth floor by our local high school students, which she was very impressed with. And they asked if we could proclaim the 15th Arts in Education Day, and I said, yeah, we could, but we could even make it more special if you could come back, which she generously agreed to do tonight. So we're honored to have Ms. Illinois here. She's a huge advocate for education, and we'd like her to say a few words now, please.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Artis, for having me here today and making this proclamation for Arts in Education Day. So the House of Congress released a resolution in 2010, 275, establishing National Arts in Education Week, which is actually this week. And so I'm going around Illinois, getting different cities involved, really to decide on one day that they can have an Arts in Education Day in their communities. So this is a day that we can really use to highlight what we're doing in the community for arts as well as in arts education, and I'm really excited that you're the first on board. So thanks for having me.
Next, we have American Legion Centennial Day. Whereas the American Legion is the largest service organization in the nation with the current membership of 2.2 million wartime veterans. The American Legion has built a legacy of dedicated service to veterans, the military, families, and communities since its founding in March of 1919. The national organization was formally chartered by Congress on September the 16th, 1919, and they're celebrating their 100th anniversary through the Veterans' Day of 2019. And whereas the American Legion was founded on strong national security, veterans affairs, Americanism, and youth programs. Legionnaires work for the betterment of their communities through more than 13,000 posts across the nation and around the world. And whereas Post Two, located in Peoria, is committed to the Legion's family's legacy of community volunteerism, and the organization's significant national role in a variety of issues, including the development of the United States Flag Code, the passage of the GI Bill, the acceptance of Agent Orange exposure as cause for adverse health effects among veterans of the Vietnam War, and the support of our nation's troops in the global war on terrorism. Now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria do hereby recognize and declare September the 16th as American Legion Centennial Day in Peoria, Illinois. We have Bob Colshaw and William Davies from the Post that are here, and they come every year. It's good to see them, and they'd like to give us a little bit more information as well.
I don't have a lot to say, but I will say I'm proud to be a Legionnaire. The American Legion officially started via La France during World War I, the idea of it. And then they came to America, formed the Legion, and went from there originally. It was set up for the care of the wounded coming back from World War I, but it has advanced, and now it's, as the proclamation says, Americanism we sponsor, youth programs we have. The GI Bill was established and made official by Congress through the efforts of the American Legion. American Legion's been around for 100 years, and we hope to see the Legion around for another 100 years because it does a lot of good for the community, as it says in our Constitution, for the community, state, and nation. So, thank you very much. Anybody interested, we're having an open house on the 16th out of Post Two here in Peoria. Everybody's welcome to come to help celebrate the centennial. Thank you.
Just want to make sure that Bob mentioned the idea that the 16th is an open house for anyone that wants to come out. Bob has been a lot of, he's our historian for the Post, and he's set up quite an elaborate concept of what has happened for Post Two throughout the years. The baseball, the bands, everything associated with Post Two in the early days. You're all welcome if you can come on out, and maybe we'll twist your arm and see if we can get some new volunteers and get you in there as far as being new members too.
On September the 20th at Parkview, right? At Parkview Cemetery on the corner of Nebraska and University, at 10 o'clock, we will be do a little celebration for the POW MIA Flag Day, and everybody here is invited. I'm sure there's plenty of room there for everyone, especially you, Mayor.
Next, we have World MSA Awareness Day. Whereas multiple system atrophy, or MSA, is a rare neurodegenerative disorder that is caused by cell loss in certain areas of the brain and spinal cord, impairing the body's involuntary functions, including blood pressure, heart rate, bladder function, and digestion. And whereas MSA, formerly called Schi Drager Syndrome, shares many similar symptoms of Parkinson's disease, such as slowness of movement, muscle rigidity, and poor balance. Treatment for SMA includes medications and lifestyle changes that may manage symptoms, but is progressive condition that is, in due course, will lead to death. And whereas people with MSA may have other difficulties with body functions that occur involuntarily, including urinary and bowel dysfunction, sweating abnormalities, sleep disorders, difficulties controlling blood pressure, sexual dysfunction, cardiovascular problems, and psychiatric problems. And whereas diagnosis of MSA can be challenging, and as a result, some people are never properly diagnosed. Early detection and diagnosis is vital and may improve the quality of life as well as prolong life. People typically live seven to nine years after MSA symptoms first appear, and surviving 10 years is rare. And whereas research into a cause, treatment, and/or cure is vitally important so that future generations do not suffer from this devastating disease, now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria do hereby proclaim October the 3rd as World Multiple System Atrophy Day in Peoria, Illinois. Larry Kellerman's here again this year to offer us some more information. Welcome, Larry.
I want to thank the council and the mayor for this resolution. This is the second time this year that we've had a resolution read for multiple system atrophy. March was recognized as MSA Awareness Month. It is such a rare disease that it needs any and all attention we can get, and these opportunities don't need to be passed on, and I appreciate very much what the City of Peoria has done. Roger Helene has joined me. He is a caregiver of a Parkinson's patient, but between the two of us together, we work with both MSA patients and Parkinson's patients. And so Roger, wearing the shirt, on the front of the shirt is the set of nerves in the brain that is affected by multiple system atrophy. And on World MSA Day, October 3rd, every hour around the world, people are asked to walk, ride, swim, jog a mile for MSA. They can go to worldmsaday.org and log that mile, and our goal is to get enough people to register to make it around the globe. We've done it twice, but we haven't been able to do it consistently, and so this year we're hoping that people will. We're inviting everybody this year to the Monarch Music Hall on October 3rd. We're celebrating our own World MSA Day there. We're having an event with blues music, silent auction. We have awareness. We have good food provided by, catered by Hy-Vee. Some of the people who have become sponsors this year include Representative Darren Lahood, the Updring Auto Group, Lenny the Lawyer, a number of other businesses as well, all seeing a real need for this disease to be beat. It is terminal, remember that. It's one of the few diseases that is terminal. There's no cure, cause, or treatment. Why should you support MSA? Well, one of the reasons might be the former mayor of here, Mayor Dave Ransburg. I talked to his wife earlier today to make sure that it was okay to bring that up. His life was cut short by MSA, and he was originally misdiagnosed with Parkinson's. And the other one is for my wife. She was also an MSA patient, passed three years ago after almost eight years with the disease, and it would have been our 20th year of marriage this year, and we would have been retired and enjoying life, but because of a disease that no one has an understanding of, that was not an option. Why should you support MSA in whatever way you can? It is a rare disease. One, there are more St. Jude runners from Peoria to Memphis than there are people impacted by MSA in central Illinois. There are more runners in one block in the race for the cure for breast cancer than there are people impacted by MSA in central Illinois. It's a very rare disease, so help us build awareness, raise research dollars. It takes a village to support MSA, and we appreciate the community of Peoria to be a part of that village. Thank you.
Next, we have Snow Rodeo. I think we're going to have an opportunity here to hear from Si Maroon and our snowfighters. They'll be here before we know it. It's also going to be a really good opportunity for us to introduce the public to our new Public Works Director, Rick Powers, who is with us for the first time tonight. And everybody knows Bill Lewis because he's the guy that's been rudder-ing us through the transition and doing a great job of it. So first, let's welcome Rick Powers, our new Public Works Director. Whereas removing snow and ice during the winter months from more than 478 miles of roads in Peoria is a critical task that involves every member of our Public Works team. And whereas the knowledge and expertise of our Public Works staff is evident in their efforts to make roadways safer for all motorists, first responders, and businesses. And whereas we all depend on our snow removal specialists, as it is vitally important that they have the opportunity to practice their skills so that they are prepared to serve citizens during inclement weather. And whereas the public is invited to witness the expert proficiency of our snowfighters at the American Public Works Association Snow Rodeo, co-hosted by the City of Peoria and the Peoria County Highway Department. And whereas this event provides snowplow operators with the community to showcase their skills against other municipalities while learning from their colleagues. Now therefore I Jamar Dismayr of the City of Peoria, Illinois, invite the public to observe the skills of snow operators from around the state on Friday, September 13th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Shops at Grand Prairie for the APWA Illinois Chapter Snow Rodeo in Peoria, Illinois. So everybody knows Si Maroon, but Si's really the person that night or day, and it usually is night, and it's usually like in the middle of the night, is coordinating our extremely professional and very competent snowfighters. So it's kind of nice that they have an opportunity to showcase their skills in the summer when we can get people out to see it, as opposed to early in the morning when there's a foot of snow and it's 20:00. But Si did a great job for us, and we look forward to the introductions of the folks behind us. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and staff, for allowing us to be here tonight to accept this proclamation for our snow rodeo, which if it's causing you some questions and wondering what this is all about, that's perfect. That's what we wanted. This is the first time that it's going to be in Peoria, and we're proud to have it here in Peoria. It will also be in Peoria again for next year, so we're hosting it with the Peoria County Highway Department for the next two years. And we're really proud to do that because we're bringing in snowplow drivers from throughout the state. The American Public Works Association Illinois Chapter actually is from Route 80, or Interstate 80, south all the way to the tip of Illinois, and we will be bringing in pretty close to 30 teams, two-man teams. Some of those, which we have here tonight, we have a couple of our, a few of our drivers here tonight, Jim Clark, Matt Savage, and Travis Martin, and they're very instrumental in this program as well, so really glad that they could be here tonight to see this. What's happening is on Friday, this Friday, and it's open to the public, we encourage you to come on out and see what the competition is, because not only are we going to have a serious but friendly competition with our snowplow drivers and the drivers throughout the state, they make no mistake about it, they take their work seriously, and they work hard at it, and they want to be as good as they could possibly be because of why? Everybody out here and everywhere else. It's about safety, and it's about getting people from A to B, where they need to go, okay? And that's what these guys do. So this Friday, out at the Shops at Grand Prairie, the event actually starts at 10, but the gates will be open at 9:00 for the opening ceremonies, and then there'll be an awards presentation in the afternoon. Everyone's welcome, there's no cost to be there, just a little bit of your time to come out and watch some, excuse me, competition. We'll also have some local celebrities coming out, some of them behind me, some of them out in the crowd, some of those that are, that you'll see on the weather. We got some weather folks coming out to drive a truck to really feel what it feels like to drive a plow truck while they're reporting the weather to us. So actually, the best part about snow today is that we don't have to plow it, right? That's a great thing. So anyway, we encourage everyone to come out on this Friday, the 13th, Shops at Grand Prairie, from 10 to 2 basically, and enjoy the competition. Thank you.
Would like to take just a minute, again, and ask our new Public Works Director to maybe introduce himself more personally. Rick has been on the job now for about eight days, and I don't think it's quite drinking water out of a fire hose, but even though he came over from Indiana with a ton of experience, he's still getting used to our team, and we're really excited for Rick's leadership and to have him here in Peoria. Rick, can you say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Pleasure to meet everyone personally, finally. It was an announcement long before now, and I won't be here long. I learned long ago, and you will learn as you talk to me, this thing called Rickology. Never try to steal the thunder from the lightning. That's the lightning back there. I don't have a whole lot to say other than I am here. Again, winter, as Si knows, is not foreign to me, because it's already snowing in northwest Indiana. It's on the tip of Lake Michigan. I told them every day I lived there, it's snowing in La Porte. So, snow removal is not foreign to me, and it's not foreign to them. I know I'm surrounded by brilliance, to quote Teddy Roosevelt, and I try to stay out of the way in that regard. We have a great leadership team, from what I've met. It's actually a six-days mayor, so, and it is a fire hose, we just haven't turned it on all the way yet. It's coming. It's a pleasure to be here. It is a pleasure to finally meet everyone. I look forward to meeting you individually, working with you, and what I hope is a long and fruitful career, and watching them do what they do best. Thanks.
Next, we'd like to invite Randall Yelverton, who's the Executive Director of our libraries, and Jennifer Davis. Are you going to come up too? Come on up. She's the Manager of Public Relations, and they'd like to give us a few words about National Library Card Sign-up Month. Hey, Randall, thanks for coming down.
Thank you, everyone. I will keep it brief. I know there's lots of business to get to tonight. Just wanted to speak briefly about National Library Card Sign-up Month. This is a time of year where we celebrate the power of libraries, the power of the library card, all that your library card can bring to you. We have over 48,000 cardholders here in Peoria, but we'd love to see more folks getting their library card. We offered over 8,000, we signed up over 8,000 new users last year. We feel we have a lot to offer with the library card, and we appreciate the city's ongoing support as we do offer what we do at the library. We are an institution that educates, entertains, gathers folks together to learn, and is open to all. We're an innovative organization that offers an array of digital resources that educate and entertain. One thing to keep in mind is that Peoria Public Library and all public libraries offer a significant economic impact to a community. We, our power users, those that use the library a lot, are saving thousands of dollars a year when they're coming and getting the books, digital resources from us. Those are items that they do not have to buy, that they can take home and use. Those users are saving a lot of money. Here at Peoria Public Library, we have a history and genealogy collection that brings people from all over. It's a jewel of our collection, and it's bringing people from across the country to downtown Peoria who want to do significant research. We have great resources down there and an amazing staff that knows their stuff, that can tell you so much about Peoria and Peoria's history, and that's a fantastic resource. We offer an invaluable return on investment, and we're excited to show you about the resources that we have in store. For those who are, who do have library cards, come down to your, excuse me, those who don't have library cards, come down to the library, get signed up, and you'll be eligible for prizes. So please come see us.
I don't really have much to add, except for that I started at the library a few months ago, and I have to say, I always thought I was a good user of the library, and I'm realizing that there's so much that so many in our community don't realize that we have. And we'd like you to, we'd like you to utilize our online research databases, as Randall mentioned, our local history genealogy department, which we actually have a professor from Vermont who is visiting Peoria on a daily basis to use that department. So please do come visit us, and if you don't have a library card, we'd love to sign you up for one.
Thank you very much.
And thanks also to the outstanding Board of Directors that we have at the library that do a great job for us as well. Last and not least, it's always in the fall or right before the fall of the year that we have an opportunity to give the recognition, the well-deserved recognition, to people through the Keep Peoria Beautiful Association that recognizes all the Iris Award winners in our community. So we have an opportunity to recognize and thank all the people that go above and beyond in keeping their properties beautiful, maintaining their properties, and setting an example for other people in their neighborhoods to do so. So Ryan Palm is the Committee Chair. He's going to So Ryan Palm is the Committee Chair, he's going to come up and introduce us to those winners. We'd like to have them all come up as well.
Well, as they're coming up, thank you, Mayor Artis and Council, for allowing us a few minutes tonight to recognize the efforts of the people of Peoria and the hard work they put in to care for their homes, for their properties. Keep Peoria Beautiful is a member of the National Keep America Beautiful Network. We're the local affiliate there, and we have a handful of major programs that we sponsor or promote throughout the year. We'll get to the Iris Awards, which is what we're here to talk about tonight in a minute, but in addition to that, the Great American Cleanup in the Spring, our major effort there to remove waste, litter, trash from our communities, get a lot of cooperative support there with neighborhood organizations. The Adopt a Box Program in the Warehouse District, encouraging neighbors and businesses to come out and care for the public landscapes that surround the Warehouse District, and all the effort that's been made there to beautify and simplify the traffic flowing through that part of town. A new one, an exciting one, the Ronald McDonald House that's being built here in Peoria. We've partnered with the Ronald McDonald House folks to coordinate, fundraise, install, and maintain the entire landscape for that new building. No small task for a group of purely volunteers and dedicated community people. So excited about that opportunity that's coming together this fall. And then our Orchids and Onions Awards, that we partner with the Iris Awards. Orchid and Onions recognize the business community, commercial buildings and properties, and then the Iris Awards recognize residential properties, people's homes. We have, in addition to tonight, we have an awards banquet at Luthier Botanic Garden on Thursday, September the 26th. A nice evening event, you come after work, you enjoy a cocktail and some heavy hors d'oeuvres, and you get to mix and mingle with other people who care just about, just as much about their properties as you do yours. It's a really nice event. We've been blessed with good weather the last several years, and it's been a really fantastic growing tradition, getting better every year. We couldn't do all of this without the great partners we have in this community. To list just a few tonight, our partnerships with Peoria Disposal Company and JIMAX have been fantastic, particularly with dealing with the Great American Cleanup. Peoria Park District and the City of Peoria as well, great community partners there that help us do what we do. So we just want to say thank you to those folks. Now, the real reason we're here, to recognize the five families that are here tonight, in addition to six others that couldn't be here, a total of 11 families or properties that we're recognizing as just standout examples of what it means to take pride in your community, to love what you do, and man, their thumbs have got to be green for as nice as things look. So just excited to recognize each one of them. I think what I'd like to do, gang, we've got a yard sign that you can proudly display. We're excited to be able to offer these again this year, to show as a sense of pride for you and to recognize your efforts, and who knows, maybe inspire a neighbor to try and keep up with you next year. So I think what I'd like to do is, I'll call your names. If you'd like to come forward, I'll shake your hand for the camera, and we'll offer you your sign, and then if you could stay in the horseshoe until, oh, we all have our signs, we'll get one last picture with all of us together, and then we'll sneak out this way and they can get down to business. Sound good? All right. Pardon me. First, Wandy Penn.[873.32][873.32](APWA member, "Thank you very much") Alrighty, next, Kim and Alan Scott.[893.25][893.25](APWA member, "Thank you very much") Ben Bladel and Mike Kennely.[910.88][910.88](APWA member, "Thank you very much") Barb Jennings.[926.81][926.81](APWA member, "Thank you very much") And Marion Mike Powell.[938.88][938.88](APWA member, "Thank you very much") All right, one last round of applause for them. Thank you again for the time you've allowed us tonight.[956.11][956.11](APWA member, "Thank you very much")
Well, thanks again, Ryan, and thanks to all the winners this year, and thanks for the fine example that you set in your neighborhoods for us. Madam Clerk, actually, Councilman Ruckregal.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board Meeting held on August 27, 2019, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Graber. Corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the township portion of the meeting. 19-283 is a request from the town officials to approve the August 2019 actual expenditures and to approve the September 2019 anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Thank you, Trustee Graber.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve as outlined.
Motion to approve, seconded by Trustee Ali. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 19-284 is a request to approve the purchase of 12 complete self-contained breathing apparatus, 36 cylinders, 11 voice amplifiers, and 14 face pieces from the low bid of MES, or Municipal Emergency Services, in the amount of $99,818. 19-285 is a request to approve the purchase of three thermal imaging cameras from Dingus Fire Company in the amount of $23,985. 19-286 is a request to accept the low bid of Autobomb Company and award a construction contract from the base bid of $109,394, with an additional authorization in contingency of 10% for a total award of $120,333 for the Teton Drive Neighborhood Culvert Replacement Project. 19-277 is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A relating to outdoor storage and display. 19-287 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Mayor's Advisory Committee for the Disabled with a request to concur of Aaron Nowlin. 19-288 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a request to concur of Brandon Martin. And 19-292 is the appointment by Mayor Artis to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a request to concur of Robin Grantham, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 19-286.
Thank you. Councilmember Ali?
Thank you, Mayor. 19-292.
292. Okay. Any other items to remove this evening? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilmember Ruckregal, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-286 is the low bid of Autobomb for the Teton Drive Neighborhood Culvert Replacement Project.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my intent to move for approval of this item, but first, my question is, it indicates that the Good Faith Effort Document was submitted, reviewed, and approved, and I would like to know who reviewed it and approved it.
Public Works, along with our EEO Officer Ferris Mohammed, approved it.
In the future, if we could have that document, because the last time we had something that came before us, it indicated that the EEO Officer signed it, and that was incorrect. So if we could have that, and then this, after tonight, if I could have that document forwarded to me, so that I could at least acknowledge that the EEO Officer did sign it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. With that, I move for approval.
To approve, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-292 is the appointment of Robin Grantham to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Ali?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Artis. I'm going to abstain from voting due to a family relationship.
So noted. Councilmember Jensen makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously, and one abstention. Madam Clerk.
We're at regular business. 19-289 is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria and the County of Peoria for the reconstruction and jurisdictional transfer of Glen Avenue from Sheridan Road to Knoxville Avenue, from the county highway system to the municipal street
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. What you have here is a communication for jurisdictional transfer, or to enter an IDGA with the Peoria County for work on Sheridan Road, or, I'm sorry, on Glen Avenue between Sheridan and Knoxville, for work that we expect to take place in 2022. What this is, is a shared cost agreement to enter in with the county. They have already approved it through their county board, and it's for your decision tonight.
Okay. Councilman Reggabach?
Mr. Mayor, this is something that people who travel that part of town, I think, are going to all agree is long overdue. This is ironically still classified as a county highway in the City of Peoria, and unfortunately, this isn't the last one, but we are checking them off the list slowly but surely. So the funding for this from POATs, which is the regional transportation, which gets federal dollars, is because of the work that we did with the county at the Willow Knowles intersection, so that allowed this to move up into queue a little bit. So I just want to encourage everybody's support on this, and I see one of my third district constituents in the audience there, Ms. Bezinski, and believe me, Lake Street and Sheridan Road aren't far off my list. Unfortunately, I can't predict when the funding will be available, but that does remain a priority for us, so I heartily move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Further discussion, Councilman Graber.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Directors, whichever one wishes to answer this. How many more do we envision in terms of transfer in the City of Peoria?
There are several other county roadways in the city, you know, Lake Avenue being one of them, as Councilman Reggabach just suggested, but it would really depend on when the county can get funding for those projects before we'd be able to take those over. So there is a list, there are, Gale Avenue is another one, there's a section of Sheridan Road, so there are at least about a half a dozen other roadways in the city that could potentially come our way.
Is there reason why we're delaying the transfer of these particular roads?
The only reason to delay transfer in this case is, we would like to take the jurisdictional component over once the completion of the construction is. So we wouldn't want to do it until it gets completed, and really, there had been funding prior to us getting this POATs money, even though the county would like to have done that years ago. They've made efforts to secure funding for it, we're unable, so there's really no reason to delay it as far as that goes, other than just, we needed to be upgraded to our standards before we would take ownership.
So do we have any timetables established for the other roads that are outstanding?
Not at this time.
And because we had the money available for this and improvements that are being made, it was considered to be an auspicious time to make this transfer, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Director and Director, interim Director, Director, Director. Thank you both.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Louis, for the fine job you did as Director, Acting Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Seeing no additional lights, for questions, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
19-290 is the request to approve the purchase of 507 to 517 Southwestern.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very excited about this item coming forward. This item will allow us to move forward and replace Station 4, Firehouse 4, which I'm hoping that many of you, I think, have already been through that station, to know that it is the oldest fire station in the City of Peoria. And if you've ever gone in there, there was one particular day I went in there last year, and I wasn't feeling very well, and the guys wanted to show me something on the upper floor, and I said, "Well, no, I'll do that another time," and they offered to carry me up the stairs. And I said, "No, I didn't do that." But what they did, I said, "Just send me, text me some pictures," and they did. And it was very distressing what I saw, for what they go through when they're on shift and get a call. These gentlemen and ladies who are part of the department need to have a better facility, a first-class, state-of-the-art, 21st-century facility, and this will, you're approving the purchase of this properties, these properties, will allow this site to be the new site of a new fire station. It is, I think the goal is to have it in, up and operational in about 12 months or less. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager? So I'm very excited about it. If you notice where the station currently is, it's on Jefferson, and across from Jefferson, there's more industrial than homes, and where this station will be placed will be really surrounded by homes, and because it is the oldest part of the city, these homes are more susceptible to fire because of their condition, and so placing this station where it will be, will be a benefit for the community, not only because it's a station, it will jumpstart a lot of economic development activity in that area. And in addition, as you may recall, you also have already approved another $12 million to, for a complete streets concept of Western next year. So I've already warned the neighbors in the area that there's a lot of improvements coming to the south side, and this is what they've been asking for, and so when all that traffic is backed up, and they can't get from one side to the other, then just smile, because this is what they asked for, and sometimes you have to be careful what you ask for. In this case, it's a wonderful thing. And so with that, I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Dr. Ali. Additional discussion? Dr. Ali?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Artis. I didn't get a chance to ride by that property, and I read the legal description, I'm just trying to get in my head exactly where it's located. Is it a corner lot? Is it a full block? 507 to 517? What's the side street that it's located on?
It's where the community Christmas tree is every year? Oh. Yes, it's- Yes, it's that lot, where the community, right across the tree from what used to be ShopRite. So where the community Christmas tree would go on that lot, that's where this lot is, and the house.
The meat store, right across the street from the meat store?
Yes.
I know that area well.
Yes, it's right, right next door is the house that is adjacent to that vacant lot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support, I know that Station Four has, needs to be replaced, and it's well overdue, but I do have some questions, and I think, I don't know if this will probably go to the City Manager. I'm wondering, since we budgeted for replacement of this firehouse almost a year ago, and approved it, what was the delay, and why is this just coming to us now?
The delay was the land acquisition, trying to find a suitable location. We were looking a little bit further south than this location at one point in time, and then when this lot, we saw that it was for sale, we talked with the Realtor on behalf of the owner, and felt that this was the superior location for the, for the fire station.
Okay, so as a follow-up, then, we already approved $2.5 million for this reconstruction in this current year's budget. So since we're just starting the process now, will we still use that $2.5 million from this year's budget, and just move it over to next year's?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question was about analyzing the response times and the impact. I know just shortly before the meeting, you emailed us maps, and they were at our desk. If the Chief or you want to just tell us briefly what those show?
Sure. The map that you made for today, we just ran a time study. What they do is 35 mile per hour, computerized, you know, generated run times, and it's color-coded in that. So really what we were looking for is to make sure that, you know, we stay within the timeframe, or if we like to stay within, and be able to cover all of Station Four's territories. How long it takes to actually get up on top of the hill for Bradley, because of the backup up there, how long to go over into the two's territory later, the backup that side. So, you know, the map shows that, you know, by the computer-generated time, we're well within the timeframe that we like to be within. So, you know, for us, it's a good location.
So when you say "well within the timeframe," can you tell us what that is?
Well, we can typically look at our travel times, and, you know, we've always tried to look at the size of the city to stay within that four to six minute travel time range, which is, you know, and which we've used throughout the entire city. You know, we're looking at good locations.
And again, if you look at your map here, you can see by the color, we dropped down in the yellow in the, in the four-minute timeframe to cover all of Station Four's territory, so it's no more than four minutes from that location. You have, remember that in the, in that territory, in that area of the city, it's a very dense area of the city forests, as far as houses go and stuff like that, but it is a very high call volume area also. So, you know, we're staffed heavily in that area of town because of the large number of calls that we get from that area.
What about the impact on servicing the Bradley area as a, as a backup?
It actually works out better for us. We're servicing the Bradley area, because we're able to do a couple of things now. We're getting out onto Western, which is good for us. We can get up on the hill pretty quickly, but also in our development of this, of the new Station Four, we're going to preempt the lights on Western, so we'll put a preemption system, which turns the lights colors, you know, to our green. So once we're out on Western, be able to, not having to slow down on Western Hill is a big thing for us, to try to get those machines started up that hill again, once we have to stop, is a very slow process. You know, so this will help all of that, and get us on top of the hill quicker.
Okay, thank you. One more last question. Do you have a timeframe, then, City Manager?
I can tell you that, I heard from Jason Meeks, who's our Facilities Director. He has a meeting set up for Thursday to meet with the Architectural Group, and to get the ball rolling. So starting on Thursday, we're going to start meeting and get going. So again, our anticipation is, you know, without any great delays through the winter, that it'll be sometime in the next year before it's finished.
Be complete?
Yes.
So within a year? And start before the winter or after?
We're starting next week, with the meeting with the Architects and Engineers, so.
We're not sure when we're going to dig ground, and a lot of that will just depend on what kind of winter we have, and how they can do their, their site work and all that kind of stuff. So, but we are getting started soon.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grab?
Long time since we've built a new firehouse. Long time. One of the things that, and this is, I think, great development here, I think it's probably better positioned and located relative to our highly densely populated areas. 61606, for example, is the most densely populated zip code outside of Chicagoland, University of Illinois, Champaign-Urbana. But Chief, question I have, asked of me, and I want my constituents to hear this. Where would the ladder truck come from that would serve Bradley University, for example, at the West Bluff right now?
Right now, it comes from Station Eight, which is down on Holbert. We don't have any anticipation at this time to move it from Station Eight. You know, if we did move it from the eight house, again, the new four house will be set up for a second bay, so we could move the truck there if we need to. But like I said, the, where it's at at Station Eight right now, is a really good location to serve the Bradley area, and especially the housing projects of Bradley, you know, their fraternity houses and sororities and stuff like that, which are, are the bigger houses within that area.
And, you know, this, actually, none of this is a district issue, per se, because the whole web of firehouses, what we have affects response time throughout the entire city. And if you remove any one of the firehouses, it has quite an effect, quite an impact all across the city, and we really don't have that many firehouses. When was the last firehouse actually constructed, the new one?
That's a good question. It would be, I think the latest one would be Station Twenty, is the newest one, and that would have to have been ten years ago. I don't know, maybe the, some of the mayor might be.
Mayor Ransburg.
I was here, I just.
It was, it was probably 2002, maybe, 2003.
And so, Mayor Artis, last time was Mayor Artis. Now, under your administration, we have another new firehouse.
That would have been Mayor Ransburg, I believe.
Mayor Ransburg, yes.
Or, Ransburg agrees, so, yeah. It's been a long time.
Long time, and so we do have to continue to update our facilities, and I thank all the hard work that Denise Moore has done, helping not only her district, but the entire city of Peoria.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Nineteen dash two ninety-one is a first reading. The request is to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance, amending the code by adding Article 19, Municipal Cannabis Retailers Occupation Tax, for Chapter 27, which is taxation imposing municipal cannabis retailers occupation tax.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What you have in front of you is the first reading on the ordinance that would permit the city of Peoria to impose a 3% sales tax, or a 3% municipal cannabis retailers occupation tax on the purchase of recreational or adult-use cannabis. Under the law that was passed by the General Assembly, this required, this law is required to be adopted by, our ordinance is required to be adopted by September 30th, if we wish to collect any of the taxes in the year 2020. So that's the reason why it's coming before you this evening. This doesn't mean that the council can't decide whether or not they want to allow for the sale of cannabis inside, of adult-use cannabis inside the city of Peoria or not. That's still a question, a policy question for you to decide. This is simply a matter of timing. As we're looking at this, we have to get this adopted, if you wish to collect any of that tax as it comes forward in 2020, by the end of this month. So that's why it's in front of you now. Staff is recommending the 3% tax. This would be in addition to the current sales taxes that we have in place. So the current sales tax inside the city of Peoria is 9%. This would be 3% on top of that. The county is also deliberating on this issue, and under the law, they have the ability to add another 3% on top of that as well. So, and again, this is a first reading, just trying to get it in front of you, so that we can meet those deadlines.
As long, just the clarification, especially for the listening public, this isn't whether or not we're going to allow the sale in Peoria. This is just basically an oppo, not an opportunity. We have to approve collecting this tax by the end of September, if we want to collect the tax next year. If, that's if the council decides to do it. If we decide not to do it, this is moot, but we have to get that, get that done this month. First reading today, if it passes, well, actually, it'll be received and filed, but we'll actually do the vote in two weeks.
That is correct.
To the issue of, I didn't want to get off on the issue of the cannabis, but this is a good spot. Just remind the public that we have two public hearings coming up. Would you like to mention?
Sure. We, we do have two public, public meetings scheduled. The first will be Monday, September 16th, at the ICC Peoria Campus, in the Student Center, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will give a truncated version of the presentation that the Legal Department presented at our Policy Session, where we discussed adult-use cannabis, and then we'll allow for the public to provide input at that meeting. Then the second meeting will be on Monday, September 23rd, at the Frank Campbell Center, and we'll be hosting that on the south side, and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. as well. And so, again, we'll be outlining the issues about whether or not the city should allow or should not allow for the sale, then where should it be located in the city, and then we'll, we'll take that, that input from the, from the public.
Okay, thank you. So again, for the listening audience, clarification, this is just to collect the tax if we approve the sale of the tack, of the substance, at a later discussion. So why don't we get a motion on the floor first, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Councilman Reganbach, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Moore. I had Councilman Kelly first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to reiterate your statement, this is not about whether or not we're going to sell it in the city. I'll, I will be opposed to that. But this is more of a tax discussion. We're going to charge 3%, or that's what we're proposing, on top of the 9% that we have now for a sales tax, on top of a possible county 3%. On top of, what's the state's new tax on this, Mr. Manager?
There are taxes that will be paid by each one of the different types of businesses. I don't have those numbers here with me, but.
I think it's, I think it's more than three.
It is.
I believe it's seven or so?
Yes.
Okay. So just, this unbelievable tax on something that presumably, if this council agrees with it, is legal. I mean, I'd rather it wouldn't be legal, but it's going to be legal, although selling within the city may or may not be. I think that the illegal sellers of marijuana, so-called black market in marijuana, are, would be thrilled to know that we're going to add another 3% to the tax burden on somebody who wants to buy this stuff. It will make their life a lot easier. They'll be able to engage in the sale of this product more easily. I think if, if I'm going to lose on this issue, which I very well may, I really don't want to encourage that element in our city, and I think one way to reduce the amount of illegal cannabis being sold is to get off this tax train. I think it's, it is viewed as a nice little gravy train for all the governments at the expense of our citizens, and so I will not be in favor of this.
Councilmember Ali?
Thank you, Mayor Artis. I also would like to reiterate that this does not preempt our decision to allow or prohibit the sale of recreational cannabis. I see it as a proactive measure. It just makes sense that we consider approving the tax in the event that later we approve the sale. So, thank you.
Very much. Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes with nine ayes, two nays, voting no. Councilmembers Searon Kelly. Madam Clerk?
We're at Unfinished Business. Eighteen dash two thirty-one is a request to approve the purchase of the cemental property located at the foot of Spring Street for $180,000, less the paid purchase options of $58,000.
Councilwoman Moore?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, this has been a long, another thing, a long time coming, and if the City Manager can just walk us through how we got here and why we needed to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The genesis, I guess, of why we're here goes back to 1999, or actually even into the early 80s, when we received the Law and Water Conservation Grant, which allowed us to take the railroad yards along the riverfront and convert them into Riverfront Park. When the Riverplex was envisioned, there were 3.45 acres, 3.345 acres of land that were taken out of the LawCon designation, which is a designation that says that this land needs to be an open space into perpetuity, and it was converted for the establishment of the Riverplex. The city tried to satisfy that, that rescission by buying land in Southtown, and trying to reserve some land in Southtown. Eventually, there was development pressure to put Kindred Hospital on that land, and then ultimately, the Gateway River City Supportive Living Facility. Then the city had to make arrangements to convert additional land. That was back then, in 2012, we purchased land in West Peoria that is now the Rocky Glen Park. This then, where cemental came into play was when we started down the path of discussing the River Trail Apartments. And through that process, there was a proposal to take more land out of the LWCF designation for the River Trail Apartments. That deal ultimately fell through. What was left of that was still the ability to purchase the cemental property. That had been negotiated as part of the River Trail deal, and it was that we would add that land in as part of the LWCF designation. So now what we have, since there is no more River Trail development, there's, all of that land will remain as part of the grant and remain open space. This will simply add the remaining 3.9 acres of land, which includes an L-shaped portion that the city currently owns, plus the cemental property, will be added into that LWCF grant, which then will turn that, we'll have three years from the purchase of this land, and from the approvals that we just received from the National Park Service, to convert it into park space. The council has already approved a budget of a half a million dollars for this, to do that remediation. The land acquisition and the remediation would come out of, of that project budget, and so that's the, the next steps that we would go forward with. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And so, am I, are we to understand that continuing to pursue this property helped us to satisfy the, the amount of property that we still needed to do to satisfy the Rocky Glen Purchase?
We, we did. The, the, as part of this process, and it's taken us a long time to work with the National Park Service and the Illinois Department of National Resources, they established book values of, of both the River, Riverplex property, the Rocky Glen property, and the cemental property, all as of the date of 2015. That was the date that they had approved the cemental purchase. And so, they established the value of the Riverplex property at $364,000. They established the value of the Rocky Glen property at $270,000. They established the value of the Rocky Glen property at $270,000. And they established the value of the cemental property at $169,000. So the Riverplex is the value we needed to build, to make up. The purchase of the Rocky Glen parcel, the purchase of the cemental parcel makes that up, and lives us with a surplus of $75,000. In prior years, we had asked to bank that land, and we've told the National Park Service and the Department of National Resources, we don't want to bank anymore, we just want to be done with this. This will allow us to go forward with this as the Riverfront Park that's under the Law and Water Conservation Fund designation.
And so, am I to understand that if the council votes to allow this purchase, then we will now control our entire riverfront?
From Spring Street into the Warehouse District, we'll own all of that land that we'll have, that will be under public ownership, save for the Hooters Building, which is under the control of the Wisdom Development Group, and the Edgewater Building, and the Amerin Substation that's located right on the riverfront, and the Crooked Waters Building. Those, there's about four parcels that are right there that are not publicly owned.
Once this property is improved, what, in layman's terms, for those who are listening or watching, what should they expect to see when this is all completed?
What they should expect to see is an extension of what's there currently. You're going to see green space, open space with a trail that will allow you to walk through that area. That's the intent behind what was presented to the public, and we're going to just extend that plan to cover this land as well.
So it would allow individuals to go out on that little peninsula, if you will?
Right now, right now on Spring Street, you know, from that portion where this property is, it's all overgrown, the trees have overgrown that area. It's an old rubber plant is where this is. So we're going to convert that back into the open space that if you are walking just a few hundred feet away, that you would have that ability to see as part of the Riverfront Park.
So would people be able to go out and fish? I mean, I don't know if there's anything in that water to fish. I mean, I fish at Dixon's.
They certainly can right now along the riverfront if they want to, so there's nothing that would prohibit them from doing so there.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'd move for approval.
Okay. Motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Is there additional discussion on this item? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be supporting this. I've been opposed to it from the very beginning. I think it's too expensive for the city to be buying this parcel of property. I think that we can look elsewhere, and we only have to make up, I think, $75,000 in value to meet the requirements for the conversion required to make up for Rocky Glen for that So I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question for city manager. Tell us a little bit about the cost of remediation, and I know we have about 320, or I don't remember not exactly the number, but if it's not enough, where will extra money come from?
Well, we have about $320,000 set aside for the remediation work and to put this into a park-like setting. If there's a need for additional funds, we'll come back to the council and ask you to approve any additional funds that we would need. So I think that, you know, the intent, from the estimates that we had of what the remediation costs were going to be in 2015, were within those dollar amounts, and we feel comfortable that we can make that happen.
Any excess, go to.
Well, if there's any excess, we just won't use it, we won't utilize those funds, so...
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilmember Jensen, I agree with you, although I'm going to vote for it to get it out of our hair. Some have more than others, but anyway. I think it is a bit of a scandal. This is a result, one of the many results we get from getting free money. It's never really free. This has been, this has been very, very difficult for very, very many years. We're going to end up spending about $8.74 per square foot of this land, when all said and done, including remediation. You'd be very hard-pressed to find any residential property in Peoria at 8.74 a foot. You start getting, in some really high-level commercial areas, you can get up to that. It's, this is very, very expensive, and it's, to me, it's kind of a scandal. I think we could start over, and that might work, but, you know, I, I'm going to vote for it, but I just think it, we should, as with many of the financial dealings we've had, we should take a lesson from this. This is just a disaster. Thank you.
Councilman Rigenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Frankly, it's hard to disagree with anything that's been said. I think you can argue either side of this and make a valid case. I'm going to be supporting this, even though I voted against the original River Trail project, because our family walks down there all the time, and I'm telling you, if you have a 10- and 12-year-old, you're not going to keep them off that little mountain, that hump, whatever it is, that is in need of remediation. So I think we're, I think it's going to be a great asset for the city to have that additional riverfront property, and yes, it floods because it's riverfront property. And yes, it's going to be rustic because that's the way we've heard people want it. But it's also going to be safe for families to be out there and not worry about if there's something that needs to be remediated that hasn't been remediated. So with, you know, I hate cliches, but this seems to be a nice lemonade that we're making out of what some could argue was lemons, and throw a little vodka in there, and I think we'll all be happy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm seeing other, no other lights on the issue. If everyone has spoken, we have a motion to approve in a second. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes with eight ayes and three nays, voting no, Councilmembers Jensen, Montalongo, and Euler. Is there any other unfinished business this evening, unfinished? Madam Clerk?
We would be at new business.
New business coming for the council tonight, new business, Councilman Grab?
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Manager, would it be possible for you to put together a report for us at our next meeting, giving us an overview, an update of our attempts to resolve the issues that are outstanding with the Environmental Protection Agency, the federal EPA? Not that I think that John Kelly or Rita Ali need to be tutored, but I think it will refresh all of our memories on how we've gotten to where we are, and then how close we are to maybe getting something resolved as well. I'd certainly appreciate that.
Yes, sir. We certainly...
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Artis. An issue that I don't think we've ever talked about, but I'd like to get maybe a report back and have us look into Airbnbs. I know more and more of them are sprouting up all over the city, including in the neighborhood some of us live in. If we could have a policy session and at least, or if you want to give us a report and a recommendation, I think we should be looking into potential regulation, and even though not, Councilman Kelly might not agree, but potential sales tax as well, or other tax, hotel tax, because I think we're losing out on some of that.
We do have staff working to put together an ordinance for you to look at and to consider. So we'll be happy to get something in front of you in the next couple of meetings. I don't know if we'll be ready by the 24th, but we'll certainly be ready by the 10th of October.
Okay. And one particular question I have, it's my understanding that if municipalities contact Airbnb, then they can collect some of the hotel tax that maybe we're missing out on, and I don't know if that's being done currently.
That's one of the things that we're looking at right now to see if that is actually the case, or if we have to have an ordinance in place regulating that. So we'll be able to give you an answer back on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. New business, Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City manager, my understanding, next meeting will be a second reading for the cannabis, correct?
Correct.
If we could get, I don't like, I know how busy everybody is, if I could ask for a report on the tax that was voted on tonight, would that include taxes on the medical cannabis?
No, the tax would not apply on the medical cannabis. It only applies to recreational cannabis.
So there's no revenues, there's no taxes on medical cannabis?
Not the 3%.
No?
No.
Just the regular tax? Do they have the regular 9%, tax?
No.
No tax whatsoever? Okay. If we could get a report on how is the money going to be collected? I think we were told in August, the meeting of 24th, that it was going to be through LGDF Fund, if I remember correctly. Is that right? Mr. Manager, is that how the money will be coming back to Peoria?
There's, there's two things. There's the portion of the sales tax that gets collected, and the state tax that gets collected that's going to be distributed statewide to communities that collect the tax, allow for the sale in their communities or not. And then there's the portion of the taxes that are specific to municipalities. And it's my understanding that there, that that second tax, the local tax that we just talked about tonight, is one where there's still some issues that need to be cleaned up at the General Assembly about which fund that's going to be coming out of. And I think that that's the component, that there's been some discussion, and there was a discussion at our policy session about a trailer bill that will be following that in terms of talking about where those dollars are going to come from. Because if it comes through LGDF, I don't think there's a mechanism in place for them to be able to discern if it's Peoria versus another community. And I think that's why there's going to be a trailer bill, so...
Well, I'm not sure if I'm, at minimum, I'm asking for a discussion, and I don't know how much it would be, but I think we need to have discussions so that our constituent can understand how, who's responsible for collecting the tax, how it will come back to Peoria, what amount we're looking at, and what the ranges we're looking at. And I know there's not, there's only four or five years of data coming out of Colorado, but at minimum, I'd like to have the opportunity to have discussion, make sure our constituent understand how it will benefit Peoria. Thank you.
You bet. The constituents are going to have to keep in mind that Springfield will determine that, and we won't know that until they do do that. So, and then we can get them the information as well. I had Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just got a email from Ring, and we have a confirmed date for the event, which is going to be Saturday, November 2nd, at Northwoods Mall from 9:00 to 1:00 a.m. There'll be more information coming here, I'm sorry, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. Thank you. And there'll be more information coming here in the near future.
Okay, thank you. I'm seeing no further lights for additional new business. Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Thank you. We have citizens to address. We ask that you just give us your name for the record, and we have a five-minute limit. Up first is Rachel O'Reilly.
Hello, Rachel O'Reilly. I'm here to formally invite all of you and the public that is listening in. Sunday, September 22nd, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., there will be a march in honor of Alexis. Last year, there was some hostility, and thankfully, to the Peoria Police Department, this march will be escorted. So anyone that might want to come and might have any reservations or fear, just know that the police will be there. I'd also like to call out ACLU, Indivisible, Drinking Liberally, I mean, these people drinking liberally, you can, you socialize and drink, but you can't look for a missing person. So please, I know a search, you know, is a big part of your day. This is only one hour, this is not a three-hour search, nobody's having to go through any woods or anything like that. So please, 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 we need the community now more than ever. We need to make sure that her case does not go cold. It depends on all of us, the community, to give Alexis justice. So please, oh please, come if you can. If you cannot, this event is on social media through the Alexis Camery Scott Campaign on Facebook. If you can't make it, please share, so somebody else might be able to know about it and come. Also, if you still can't come, donate, please donate. Yeah, I can't, I'm going to forget something. But yeah, thank you, just, just, oh, yeah. So it's going to be on Sunday. Sunday's a prayerful day, I'm sure a lot of you all be in church. So be sure and mention this to your pastors. By 1:00, you all should be out of church. So if you can get your church members and friends to come, that would be even great. Let's be there in prayer. Thank you.
Up next, we have Brian Evans.
Good evening, honorable members of this body. My name is Brian Evans. I am a follower of Jesus Christ, King of Kings and the Lord of Lords. I'm also a husband, father of eight, grandfather of seven and counting. I also serve as a pastor in a small, local Presbyterian congregation. I'm asking this body to declare Peoria, Illinois a sanctuary city for the unborn. You would be enacting this law or ordinance consistent with the oath you swore to support and defend the U.S. Constitution against all enemies. You even pledged earlier your commitment to liberty and justice for all. The Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution states, "Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the law, life, liberty, or property." This is actually the original verbiage of our Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men. The unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness are granted to men by their Creator, meaning these are rights civil government does not grant, nor can lawfully take away unless, of course, one has been convicted of a capital crime. Why do we have the Fourteenth Amendment? The Fourteenth Amendment was added to our Constitution in 1868, three years after our bloody Civil War ended. This amendment rightfully restored to an entire segment of our population their full rights as human beings made in the image of God. It is the primary role of civil government, which is why I'm appealing to you, to secure the rights of its people. The very first right our Creator grants us is life. Without life, all other rights are meaningless. However, right now, in this city, there are living souls, unborn human babies, the most vulnerable among us, being denied their right to life. Innocent babies are being killed without mercy in this city almost every day. You see, we allow the denial of their God-given rights, just like we wrongfully denied African-Americans their God-given fundamental rights in the early days of our nation. It was wrong then, and it is wrong now. The ground you walk on every day is soaked with the blood of the innocent. Our city, our state, our nation is awash in a sea of blood. Since Roe versus Wade, you and I are complicit in the murder of over 60 million people, 60 million... 60 million people. How many more millions have to die before you say enough? How many more have to die before you take a stand and defend them? I am appealing to you, you who are charged to secure the rights of your vulnerable neighbors, I'm asking you to declare Peoria, Illinois to be a sanctuary city for the unborn. You can join the other cities who have done so. I am asking you before God and man to outlaw this heinous crime against humanity and the God who created us. Thank you for your attention.
Up next, we have Jimena Lopez.
Hello there. So hi, my name is Jimena Lopez. I live on 5626 North Hightown Drive here in Peoria, and I'm here to talk to you, Mr. Euler. So I wrote something so I don't go over my time. So I am very concerned about the fact that after the incidents of the past couple of weeks, you're still haven't made a decision to hand in your resignation to city council. I understand that you put a lot of effort on your campaign, but let me remind you about the fact that you ran as a servant leader and nothing about the way that you handle the situation is showing us that you're actually the leader that you promised to be. So I have seen people in your situation many, many times throughout my career, and if I've learned one thing from the Center for Prevention of Abuse, is that things won't get better until the abuser takes responsibility for their actions. And if that first step doesn't happen, the abuse will happen again. So this council doesn't have, as a whole, a great record of holding their own accountable for their actions. So sometimes it's left to people like me to come here and do so ourselves. So I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow when you go to court, but your attorney over here already said to the press that he cannot wait to go to trial, and that shows me that you are not yet prepared to take responsibility for your actions. So I don't want a person like that to be making decisions for my city and for my community. So I'm going to ask you again, Mr. Euler, please resign to this seat. Thank you.
Well, based, Rob Hanauer, many of you know me. Based on the somewhat scripted, somewhat unscripted discussion in the first reading regarding the taxes before even addressing the dispensary, I think it says a lot. That's what I'm here for. On the issue of recreational marijuana, federal law is clear. It is a felony under Controlled Substances Act of 1970 to deal in marijuana. We see it right now in the bomb squad in Dightman that's over in federal court where a bunch of people are looking at 50 to 60 years to life in prison, where some of the allegations are dealing in marijuana. Indeed, those associated with Illinois' largest-scale marijuana producers risk being sent to federal prison for the rest of their lives. Recreational marijuana businesses do make bad neighbors. They bring in criminal activity, they add traffic, they drive down property values, encourage responsible people to locate and relocate elsewhere, and they discourage business growth. I want us to reduce crime, increase property values, encourage people to stay and to locate in Peoria, and encourage business growth, and I don't think that's the way we do it. Dealing in marijuana is racketeering activity under RICO. Some of you have seen my Facebook posts. And those who engage in a pattern of racketeering activity through a corporation or other enterprise are liable for three times the economic harms they cause, plus costs and attorney's fees. If you don't believe me, look at Safe Streets Alliance First Hickenlooper out of Denver, Colorado. Those who conspire with racketeers by granting licenses or by otherwise agreeing to assist them are likewise liable. There are two battles here. One is legalization. Sorry, we've lost that. There was a time in 2017 when I wouldn't agree with John Kelly on much. That's, that time has passed. I have spoken with a lot of people, I've spoken with educators, about the difficulty of educating kids when their parents are addicts and they're bombarded with advertising and legalized drugs. And teaching kids don't use when we ourselves are making it legal and we're making it accessible. I've talked with addiction treatment providers trying to keep addicts clean. I represent them. I've talked to them. They've talked about the difficulty of staying clean when the access is there. I've talked to probation officers trying to keep people from reoffending, parents who are trying to raise their children in a world where we justify every bad act or we legalize it. I've talked to property owners who want to keep their property values strong, and they want a clean community. I've talked to business owners trying to hire a clean workforce. They all agree, this is a problem. Now, they may not be as loud as I am, or Anthony Walraven, or anybody else that gets up here and says, "We should have dispensaries here." But they are your constituents, and they deserve their voice to be heard and considered. I think I know where this vote is headed. It's wrong. And why is the vote going to be here? Two issues: votes in your next campaigns and money. You think that the projections are great. The problem is, as Mr. Kelly said, and we've seen it elsewhere, the projections are never accurate. Because when you tax it at up to 25%, depending on the amount of THC in the cannabis or in the product, it drives the black market up. They do love it. And it doesn't matter whether we get 3% or not. Additionally, we have increased needs for medical care, mental health treatment, addiction treatment. We will have increases in drug-driving accidents and deaths, increased teen usage and dependence, increased second-hand harms to children and people who are round users, like children abusers. We will have increased industrial accidents in the workforce. This is opposed by most major health organizations. If any of you intend to trade off your constituents' safety, health, and welfare for this dispensary, I'm going to stand in your way, whether it's in the political arena, the legal arena, or both. Thank you.
Up next, we have Zachary Getbridge.
Man, who let in all the squares? Anyway, my name's Zach. I'm here to address the elephant in the room. I want to talk about the allegations of domestic abuse by Councilman Euler. On July 31st, Zach Euler was arrested for charges of aggravated domestic abuse, interfering with a report of domestic violence, and unlawful restraint. He was later released from jail on $100 bond. The survivor of this incident claims Euler, in a drunken fury, took her phone away, threw her to the ground, and put his arm against her neck. Police later recorded evidence of bruising and cuts on the survivor. In the order of protection filed the next day, there are also allegations of sexual assault. Since this incident, Councilman Euler has made no statement regarding these allegations. Charges were initially dropped in the case, but now Euler faces charges of domestic battery and interfering with a report of domestic violence. Many people, including probably some of you here in the horseshoe, believe we should uphold the principle of innocent until proven guilty under the law. Councilman Euler does have due process rights after all, and I'm not here to disagree. I think due process is very important. The amount of due process an individual, due an individual by the state in a criminal trial is extremely high for a reason, because the stakes are so high. However, the amount of process due Zach Euler by his constituents is much lower. Euler's constituents have a right to demand and receive answers from their elected officials if they have reason to distrust that individual. And Zach Euler has a duty to provide some form of defense to these allegations, but he hasn't done that. All the people of Peoria have to rely on is the survivor's allegations and the police incident report. Based on this alone, we can assume with some certitude that at least one crime was committed by Euler. In the police incident report, Euler admitted to taking his survivor's phone away, which means he admitted to the police he interfered with a report of domestic violence. This is a Class A misdemeanor punishable by up to 364 days in jail and/or a fine of up to $2,500. This isn't some minor infraction like jaywalking or smoking weed. This law was put in place to protect domestic abuse survivors, and because Euler has made no statement, his constituents have no option but to believe this happened as he himself admitted. I find it highly hypocritical that an alleged servant leader refuses to answer his constituents. It seems the alleged servant leader doesn't actually believe he owes them anything. What happened to personal responsibility? Alleged conservatives are always harping about personal responsibility until it actually involves them. Even Beth Aksen, when she said something kook, kooky, at least had the intestinal fortitude to stand in front of the public and defend her actions. Is it really true that Councilman Euler is allegedly too cowardly to defend himself to his constituents? If these allegations are true, which I see no reason not to believe at this point since our alleged servant leader has said nothing, then Euler should resign posthaste. Now, I know Euler has been telling his friends and tenants that these allegations are false or blown out of proportion. I know he's been telling everyone privately his survivor has mental health issues as a means to delegitimize his survivor's claims, and I think it's pretty despicable to use someone's health against them like that. Lastly, I want to condemn the silence of the rest of the council. Most of you publicly state your opposition to lawbreakers and abusers, but when it actually comes time to do something, y'all remain just as silent as this alleged abuser here. I know you can't vote him off the horseshoe, but at the very least, you could pressure him publicly to make a statement. Why should any abuse survivor in this town trust city council to defend them when you won't even demand answers from an alleged abuser in your midst? Have you all forgotten that every one of you is an alleged constituent of Euler? Do you not think the rest of Peoria deserves answers? The bottom line is, Peorians should not have to wait a year or more for a trial to finish, all the while someone who has lost the trust of the people continues to make decisions for them. This alleged servant leader needs to address these issues, and if these allegations are true, he has a duty to resign. And every single one of you on here who could be doing more to pressure him into making some kind of statement.
We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Spears, or Spears, Seer, sorry. Councilman Seer, please cast your ballot. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. This meeting is adjourned.